Recommend is let's take this back through as a zoning change. We'll have public hearings at the Planning Commission level. That way, you know, we don't have the opportunity that the Prim Spring subdivision says that we're going back on what was approved in that planned residential development. If there's...
That's what we decided.
Yeah. So can we go ahead and take that through?
Staff could be the applicant on that certainly, Mayor, and if that's your pleasure, we'll work with the Planning Department, Legal Department to start the paperwork on that.
Okay. Everyone up? Everyone up? Okay, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna close the special meeting and we're gonna go straight to the council meeting. Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, June the 8th, 2017, 7:00, which is a significant date because the Predators are playing right about now. So if y'all hear a big loud cheer, that's because they've hopefully scored, so. Speaking of that, Mr. Shacklet, this is your prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to introduce tonight to do our opening prayer, 13-year veteran of our police department, Motorcycle Officer Sergeant Clayton Williams. Sergeant Williams is gonna do our opening prayer.
Awesome.
Counselor, Mayor, Mr. Williams, thank you. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. We ask that you be here present in this meeting, be with all those in attendance and especially the ones here sitting before us today that have a lot of very important decisions to make. Bless them. Thank you so much for their stewardship. Give them guidance and direction and wisdom as they pour over very labor-intensive decisions as they affect all those that live in this great city. Thanks for the blessings you've poured out upon the city and just be with everyone here tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a very special presentation tonight. Have Willis here who got a killer award in DC, and we're gonna make you tell all about the award here in a few minutes. You've gotta give a 30-minute speech, if that's okay. Hey, and I don't know if y'all know this, but cool people have braces. I've got a proclamation for you that I want to be able to read for you. Whereas Williams Willis McAdams recently named our state's top middle school winner for the 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program, exemplifying the value of volunteer community service and is a role model to other youth as well as adults in our community. And whereas a surprising number of volunteers in communities across the nation are like Williams, a student attending Central Middle School contributing time without expectation of reward other than the gratification that comes from helping others. Some of these young people work in established groups, others seek new and unique ways to help others in their own. And whereas recognizing these young volunteers and encouraging others to follow their example is the aim of this nationwide program conducted by Prudential Financial and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Its aim is to reach into every community in all 50 states and the District of Columbia to identify and honor these unsung heroes locally, state by state, and then nationally, in the hopes that their recognition will serve to stimulate others to volunteer service. Now therefore, I shame McFarland by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, to hereby applaud the commitment Williams has made to the state of Tennessee, Rutherford County, and to Murfreesboro communities and proudly proclaim that May 18th, 2017, is the day to recognize Williams McAdams and call upon all Murfreesboro and Rutherford County citizens to join me in recognizing him on this top honor.
(applause)
I heard that, Rick.
It wasn't Rick. It wasn't Rick. Not Rick.
Will you introduce who's here with you tonight?
These are my grandparents. They tell me everything that I need to know. They guide me on everything that I do. These are my parents that do the same, just in a little bit more of a loud manner. And this is my little sister, Papi Kate.
Thank y'all for coming here tonight. Congratulations.
Congrats.
And don't forget this.
Congratulations.
And Willis, unless you want to stay and hear about budgets, your community service is fulfilled, so. Thank y'all. All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you. You have several different items for our approval.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Schreitfield, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes for the April 20th, 2017 regular meeting and the May 18th, 2017 regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreitfield, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 170Z12 to rezone an area along Kings Highway and Bridge Avenue to duplex residential RD District and light industrial LI District.
Move for approval.
Motion of second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 170Z13 to amend conditions applicable to approximately 17.3 acres in the planned unit development PUD District located along Rucker Lane, Victory Station PUD.
Say it.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 170Z13 to amend conditions applicable to approximately 17.3 acres in the planned unit development PUD District located along Rucker Lane, Victory Station PUD.
Say it.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17014 to amend Murfreesboro City code, depending, say, zoning, Sections 9 and 31 regarding cell towers, small cell antennas, and underground fiber optic cable, Section 27 and Table 2 regarding landscaping in Chart 1 and Chart 4.
Move for approval.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to provisions of new business, pursuant to provisions of TCA 656-206 and the City Charter, conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed 2017-2018 City of Murfreesboro budget. Notice said public hearing was published in the May 29th, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Before we open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, if you'll direct all questions to the council, at the end of the public hearing, we'll get answers to those questions. If you're representing a group, you have five minutes. If you're speaking individually, you'll have three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider any changes to the proposed 2017-2018 City of Murfreesboro budget.
Mayor, we reviewed changes in a memorandum that I distributed this afternoon. Comments or suggestions you might have? We did discuss these thoroughly at 4:00.
Is there a motion to include Mr. Lyons' comments that he gave to us in memo form that we discussed at our budget at 4:00?
I'll make the motion, so move if subject to all staff comments. Are you gonna have an updated?
Yes, but talked to Finance in between meetings. I think what we thought would be neatest and cleanest is just to vote on this memorandum. It's in black and white. It's in front of you. There are a few other things that you talked about. I think there was two police positions. We'll clean those up at second reading and we'll have that tee in advance and we'll know the math is right and you can see it.
As well as the other things that we discussed.
Yes, I think the suggestion was if all of these changes are acceptable, let's make only these changes.
Tonight.
Tonight. Yes, sir. With additional changes to happen on second reading and any others that might come up.
Second.
All right. Motion of second. Ms. Schreitfield, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, so that was for the proposed budget as amended with the change, or excuse me, with...
Well, that's to put in those changes.
Put in those changes.
And now you're gonna read it for first reading.
Okay.
Outside agency that we talked about, does that need to be any changes? Do you want those voted on? Do we vote on those now? Or are they gonna be apart since we had the discussion? Or I brought that up in a workshop?
I think what we'll vote on these changes that are just on these sheets.
Bring them...
And then they'll have a second set that will come back to us before the second reading.
And then that second... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that's fine.
And then that second reading, the question I asked about the JQs will be answered in that second, whether he's gonna bring it back, right?
My understanding on the, any of the other salary changes, they were all gonna be pending the Gallagher study. We're gonna push all those to...
And then we can have a budget amendment after that. Right. Pick them up retroactively.
Pick them up right after that.
Retroactive.
Yeah. The 29th meeting that we're talking about, we would do that and then pick them up right after that.
That'd be the last week of June is when we would look to pick those up, so.
The ones I was asking about, the budget.
Move for approval on passage on first read.
As amended?
As amended. We all numbers.
I might suggest too, any other changes that you want for us to include, like if you have additional outside agencies that we haven't already talked about tonight, you might get those to Mr. Lyons so that we'll have those prepared for you for next...
Consider.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Clear as water.
Second.
All anytime.
Ms. Schreit. All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Schreitfield, call the roll.
Who is the second?
The motion was...
Eddie was the motion, I was the second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17028, the appropriations ordinance.
No, we're doing number nine.
I'm sorry. Okay. So consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17029, the tax rate ordinance. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution 17R13, improving the budget of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year 2017-2018.
So moved.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution 17R14, improving the budget of the Stormwater Utility Management Fund for the fiscal year 2017-2018.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Assistant Planning Director outside the city sewer customer for approximately 45 acres located along Rucker Road.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Donald Anthony with the Planning Department. At the May 17th meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, the Commission considered an application for annexation of 45 acres located along the north side of Rucker Road. This is Rucker Road, not to be confused with Rucker Lane. The application was made by Rick and Amber Morgan, the owners of that 45-acre parcel. This property is located approximately one mile south of the existing city limits, and because the property is neither contiguous with the city limits nor located within the city's urban growth boundary, the Planning Commission did not act on the annexation request. However, because an existing city sewer line crosses the property, the Planning Commission did make a favorable recommendation to the City Council to accept the property as an outside-the-city sewer customer. The sewer line bisects the property and runs from the southeast to the northwest. The applicants have agreed that if the city accepts the property as an outside-the-city sewer customer, the property will be subject to city development standards. Per agreement with the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, for planning and zoning purposes, the property would be treated as single-family residential, RS-15, and any future development on the property would be subject to RS-15 standards. Again, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to you to accept this property as an outside-the-city sewer customer. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
There's no questions, I move for approval. Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Transportation Director, agreement with TDOT regarding number 170065, implementation of adaptive signal control technology, ASCT, for Rutherford-Northfield Boulevard.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Last summer, staff threw a TDOT competitive congestion mitigation air quality grant, CMAC grant program, submitted a proposal for an adaptive signal controls project for Rutherford-Northfield Boulevard from Broad Street to Highland Avenue. The intent was to add the Rutherford Boulevard system to the city's inventory of interconnected arterial systems to achieve coordination benefits along this corridor as have been previously achieved in other interconnected and coordinated systems. Implementations of the system will not only enable the city to achieve many of the traffic signal operation efficiencies as have previously been realized with the other coordinated signal systems implemented by the city over the last several decades, but will additionally provide a heightened benefit by providing the ability to actively and effectively identify and respond to changing traffic patterns and roadway conditions as they occur, as well as providing air quality benefits which are achieved from the reduction in stops and delays. TDOT awarded the city the grant request in December of 2016. Since, the project has been adopted by the NPO's Fiscal Year 2017 to 2020 Transportation Improvement Plan. The fiscal impact for this particular project, as you see, total cost is $3,377,000 and $10. City's participation is $21,000. So it's almost a 100% funded project through federal funding. The proposed project is described as follows. Implementation of an adaptive signal control technology system along Rutherford Boulevard from southeast Broad Street to Highland Avenue, including interconnection of 14 traffic signals with fiber optic cable connecting to the existing traffic operations center at City Hall. Also included in the installation of nine additional CCTV cameras and to upgrade selected signals to include pedestrian signal timing elements. The adaptive system uses real-time algorithms through various sensors and inputs to predict traffic flows at a level to enable proactive control of the signal system. I would like to mention that not all corridors are candidates for this type system. Rutherford Boulevard was selected due to the inconsistent traffic patterns. It also has somewhat controlled limited access with the medians and has moderate traffic volumes. A SEER or Systems Engineering Analysis Port will be generated in preliminary design phase to develop the system operation of the adaptive system. As I mentioned before, this has gone through the NPO and has been approved and has been adopted into the tip. Staff would recommend approval of the contract with TDOT, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr?
Traffic like water flows to the point of least resistance, so if we can get this traffic moving, it'll benefit everybody. I move for approval.
Second. I want to say I agree. I was on Rutherford the other day and it was like lobsters crawling down the, around that specific intersection around Walmart. It was crazy. So I thank you. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Task order agreement number one with Neil Schaefer for professional services for Broad and Memorial Traffic Systems is timing an operations project.
Yes, sir. Presented this a couple weeks ago and wanted to kind of follow up, kind of give you guys, I guess, go through this one more time, kind of the background on the Broad Memorial Project. The intersection of Broad Memorial is currently located at the core four signal system. Southeast Broad Street, Northwest Broad Street, O'Fort Parkway, and Memorial Boulevard. Due to high traffic volumes required, extended cycle lengths of traffic signals at Broad Street and Memorial currently operate in a free mode, which is totally independent of any other system. Phase one approach prior to the opening and the initial opening of the Broad and Memorial interchange, the focus on phase one of the project will be the core interior of the systems, which include Northwest Broad Street, Medical Center, which includes Northwest Broad Street from Medical Center to West Main Street, Memorial Boulevard, and O'Fort Parkway from St. Clair Street to New Salem Highway. The study will include the evaluation of existing traffic signal, interconnect configuration, signal system configuration, assess known and anticipate operational flow changes and implement phasing conditions. Additionally, we will also incorporate the new signal at Lidle Street and the Roundabout. Phase two will actually be after the opening of the interchange. Once the traffic patterns stabilize, we will focus on the coordination of the other, of the corridor systems, which includes O'Fort Parkway, Memorial Boulevard, and southeast Broad Street. I would like to mention that this task order not only includes the study, report phase, but the consultant will also be instrumental in the implementation and field adjustment tweaks with city staff to maximize the efficiency of the system. We have this scheduled to be funded out of State Street data next year's budget. Staff would recommend the approval of the contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
There are no comments, I move for approval. Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Schreit, for call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you. Go Pritz.
Unfortunately, we just got a update from...
Trailway.
WSMV, they've already scored. It's 1-0 in Penguins. Consider recommendations from the Assistant City School Superintendent, fiscal year 2017 budget amendments.
Mayor, this is a routine item they bring every year. They've already taken this to the school board, and because we passed their budget by resolution, we also need to approve their budget amendments.
Okay. We'll need to...
Sorry.
We'll consider for adoption Resolution 17R10, amending 2016-2017 budgets for the Murfreesboro City Schools. This is the first amendment.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Director, Amendment Number Four, to contract with Kimley Horn and Associates for West Park A&E Service. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. As we continue to move forward with the development of the West Park, we have, the Murfreesboro City Council has previously approved contracts and amendments with Kimley Horn for site selection services and master planning. With the recent approval of the master plan, the next step is the proposed amendment for continued professional services for concept development, design development, final design, permitting, construction drawings, bid documentation, and construction phase services. As detailed in the contract before you, the services are to be compensated on a labor fee plus expense basis. The tasks are assigned with fee ranges with a not-to-exceed amount of $2 million. The Amendment Number Four to the contract for the West Park A&E Services is recommended. David Code from Kimley Horn is here tonight as well. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson? Second. Motion of second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider professional services contract with Reagan Smith Associates for two maintenance facilities.
Thank you. We contracted with Reagan Smith Associates earlier this year for professional services to evaluate our maintenance, building, and facilities program, to develop conceptual site plans, and develop a preliminary cost opinion of the proposed maintenance facilities. We have worked closely with Reagan Smith since that time and have proposed maintenance We have worked closely with Reagan Smith since that time and have proposed maintenance facilities at Old Fort Park and at McKnight Park to accommodate the many maintenance needs of our growing park system. The proposed scope of services before you includes surveys of proposed sites, preliminary site planning, site plans, landscape architecture, architectural services, construction administration, and post-construction inspections and certifications. As is in the contract before you, the services with Reagan Smith are to be compensated at a not to exceed hourly, at an hourly rate with not to exceed of $147,000. The plans have been, the concept plans for the maintenance facilities have been reviewed and approved unanimously with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the contract before you is for professional services for those two maintenance shops is our recommendation for you tonight.
Move for approval.
Second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider the property acquisition at Cornerstone Drive for future park.
As is identified in the city's comprehensive master plan, Murfreesboro 2035, Murfreesboro has a recognized need for park lands and for neighborhood parks. With the proposed purchase, the city can provide a site for passive recreation in the densely populated and rapidly growing area near Case and Lane. The city and the owner of the property at Cornerstone Drive have reached a tentative agreement for the city to purchase approximately 12 acres of a 13-acre tract. The tract is divided by Puckett Creek, with the city proposing to retain the creek as well as a buffer along the eastern bank of the creek. The remaining land east of the stream buffer will be subdivided into two residential lots to be retained by the owner. The proposed neighborhood park area is immediately north of the proposed Evergreen Farms Phase Two amenity center, as well as the Puckett Creek floodway, which will provide a continuation of open space and park facilities, as well as stormwater protection features. The acquisition price is $3,000 per acre. With the additional survey work and closing allowances, the total purchase cost will be approximately $50,000. Funding for up to $40,000 will be sourced from the stormwater fund with additional fees to be appropriated from our operating budgets in the future. The Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission have both approved this, this project, and it's recommended for contracting for survey work by Huddleston Steel, and acquisition of the property and associated cost subject to appropriate approvals and closing conditions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption refunding Resolution 17R12 for construction of the Jordan Farm Soccer Practice Facility.
Okay. We are nearing substantial completion on the project for the Jordan Farm Soccer Practice Facility that is underway now. The project began on November 6, 2014 with the feasibility study for that site. Since that time, has been going through that construction process with Rollins excavating through the city's annual concrete storm drainage contract, providing side work, grading, access, and parking, and also a different contract with LSI for the Landscape Services Incorporated for additional services there as well. Before you is a refunding Resolution 17R12 with, to, to allow funds for the completion of the project in the amount of $1.1 million. To keep the project moving forward timely, the refunding resolution is recommended. Welcome any questions.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 17R11 approving Chapter One of the Private Acts of 2017.
Mayor, this year, Mayor and Council, this year, the General Assembly passed a statute that amended the city's private, private act charter. The amendments made three changes to our charter, allowing the mayoral position to be filled in cases vacant by special count, or special election, sorry. It also amended some dates in there to correspond the charter with the mandated dates for elections that our previous charter had, had lagged on from, from language years past. And then lastly, it allowed for council to choose to fill a council vacancy either by appointment or by call of a special election. So with that, to change our charter, councils required to adopt the, adopt a resolution accepting the changes by two-thirds vote.
Any discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have several beer permits in front of you.
You do, Mayor. We have a new restaurant coming up at 3919 Cedar Glades Drive. They do need to finish up their building codes inspections, but all the other requirements that we check have been met. Additionally, we have another restaurant that is a new location at 2222 Medical Center Parkway, Suite A. They also need to finish their building codes inspections, but all the other requirements we checked have been met, and we ask permission, if you approve this tonight, to issue that permit once they've finished their building codes inspections.
Move for approval.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have several different first looks for board and commission approvals that expire the end of June, so if you have any questions about those, please let Ms. Tig know on those.
Payment of statements.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have one item of other business. We have a bid from Land Link Communications for cabling at the Black Fox School Edition.
Mayor, this is something the schools are ready to do and put into place, and they were trying to get this done as quickly as possible since they had to go under bid. The paperwork from the schools is in order, and the money is on hand through our County Shared Bond Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I want to give a quick update before we get to any other, or other business, but we have had several different meetings. Is, we had two today on some of the crime that is going around MTSU. We're still working on the approach with the memorandum of understanding with MTSU that hopefully will be finished the 1st of July. We've had several discussions on a credentialing program with an outside group on our apartment complexes, and then we met with two apartment groups today, or both, one was out of state and the other a conference call with a group that are out of state, and I think they're all working independently on internal decisions or internal things that they're doing at their complex. So, wanted to let the residents know that arrests have been made in all of the cases. One is late as this week, so we are, want to give our, our congratulations to how well our police departments do in with all of these, these issues. So, together, we'll, we'll figure all of it, all of it out and continue to make Murfreesboro a safe place to live.
Mayor, you've also done a phenomenal amount of work with the apartment complex and everything. You need to be commended for the effort that you put forth and the time that you spent on it, because I, I don't think anybody exactly how many hours it has been, but I know it's phenomenal and, it, it, it needs to be recognized, so thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Me too.
Good work.
Any, any other business from the staff or City Council?
Mayor, I'd like for, since we've, we've kind of accomplished what we had tried to do in our discussion about filling the vacant seat on our council, we've kind of gone through that, crossing the t's and dotting our i's by correcting our charter, and I think it's, I think it's appropriate for us to have some discussion. Our, I would like to make a motion that we fill it with a, an appointment, and that that appointment be Susan Young, and that is a motion.
A motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion second. Discussion.
I, I wish truly that we had, and, and before we entertain any names, that we would go through a process and look at the criteria at which the person we're looking for is. I mean, people campaigned extremely hard for these jobs, and I haven't spoken with Susan. I don't know her, her heart as to whether she even wants to serve this position or not, but I, I think that before I could vote on this, I think we should have a retreat and have a conversation and some discussion about what the criteria is and what exactly we're looking for, and make sure that whoever is selected is unanimous choice of the council.
Well, and again, from, I'll, I'll say to you too, that just like we spoke about last time, that hopefully we could do this without a name, first off, to see if we could even come to an agreement on how to do it, but if, if you got a motion in a second to appoint somebody, what I'll say is, I think from a public's perspective, it would be terribly irresponsible for us to not at least know, you know, that the public would have no chance at all for any kind of input or direction, or to know what this, you know, what Susan Miss Young, you know, what her thoughts on issues are, and for us to do that without even having any idea. I mean, I haven't talked to her either. Maybe you've had the luxury of talking to her, and you might feel differently, but from a public's perspective, I would think that you would want the public to be able to have an opportunity to look at what those issue, you know, what her thoughts are on things too, but I, I've made it really clear where I stand on this, as far as what I think the right way to do this is, and without even the name being mentioned, I'm, you know, I, I was hoping we could go it a different way, but...
As far as the criteria, I, I agree with, I'd like to see Mrs. Young in this position, but as far as the criteria, what criteria did we have when we ran?
Well, we went to forums, and we had debates, and we were in the newspaper. We, the public had a real good chance to know what we stood for, for our vote, what we would vote on.
Right. And, and I'm, I'm not arguing that, opposing that at all. Well, what I was saying in the past, when the council has appointed someone, they did not go through that process. It was just appointed on the council. I'm just saying in the past, and that being said, I would like for us to follow suit on, in the past, how it's been done. No one was interviewed, the council threw out a name, it was voted on, and that's how the past appointments have come to the council, and I would like to see us do it the same way.
Let, let me make some comments as to, because, you know, we, we plowed this field a lot, and, and I, initially, you and I agreed on how would be the most optimum way to do this, is have an election and allow the public to vote. There is no pattern that's going to be consistent for this happening. When this circumstance happens, they have to be dealt with individually. You're never going to find the perfect format to answer this question, except when we have an election. An election does determine, even though regardless of how many people show up, those are the people, that the people that decided had made that decision. That's my preferred choice. But in this case, in this position, this is not only helping us come to a resolution with four votes, it's important for us to fill a position because it's that seventh position. It is not really appropriate, in my mind, to have somebody that necessarily, I would say, would agree with. It's more about who's thoughtful, who has a conscientious knowledge and love for this community, who has a passion for the city, and the ability to represent their own opinions publicly. I know this of Susan. I've also talked to Susan about her willingness to not run, or desire not to run in the next election. This is fulfilling, it's actually coming full circle to, and giving honor to Doug's term, letting her complete it. She has a desire to want to complete it, to complete, complete his term. This brings us to conclusion and then allows the voters in the next election, a year from August, to make that determination who they would want to fulfill the next term. To me, this is a unique situation with unique personalities involved in it. Our, changing our charter allowed us some flexibility, and every time, every time this comes up, we'll have to consider it, the council will have to determine what is in the best interest of our citizens. I would hope we could have had, it would have been practical and economic and make fiscal sense for us to have an election. I would have rather done that, but I don't think that's a responsible thing to do in this case, and to me, the only responsible answer, and a very, that would not only honor Doug's memory, but also provide an individual that would do a competent job of representing what is in the best interest of our community, is Susan. And because of her desire, if she had said she wanted to run in the next election, I would not have been for this appointment, I'll be honest with you. I've had that conversation with her. But because she's, she says she will not run in the next election, I feel like this is the best answer for, for our council, and so all my cards are on the table.
So you don't think the public needs to know how she'll, I mean, any of her...
Any appointment that's made in the middle term, if you make an appointment in the middle term to council, it's just our best judgment. It's going to be your best judgment anyway, and, and, and eventually, you know, anybody that we would nominate would come up to that same conclusion. Some, four of us might, if we could come up with four people that would, we could all agree upon, but I'm not sure that's possible. And then you'd have to say, will that person agree not to run, because me, I'm, I'm not for appointment unless they won't run in the next election. So, so, you know, I, I kind of painted myself in a corner, but I, I do agree that at this point, with these, these facts before us, this is the best choice and the best option for our, for our council to take. And, you know, you know, I can tell, this is what I know of the decision, and, and given, given the circumstances that have happened, I think this is, this is a good decision to make, and so I, I stand by that.
And the seat has been vacant long enough. I think we owe it to the public to take action on this. Mr. Young died in December, and here we are, almost the middle of June. We have what we need from the state to make a decision, and what makes me very nervous, and I think it's very unfair to our citizens, right now, in the case of a tie, it will drop for a lack of majority. We are going to have some very important issues come to this council, guys, that we're going to have to make a decision on, and we cannot let very important decisions come to this council, and we have a tie, and it fails for lack of majority.
Can you give us one example of where we've had a tie and that situation has occurred?
I said, we cannot. I didn't say we have. I said, we cannot allow that to happen.
I, I just, you know, I, me personally, I don't like us picking, and the reason I don't like us picking is, when I first ran for office, everybody said, Eddie, there's a good old boy's system in place, it's your responsibility to try and break it up. And I ran partly for that reason, and, and with that, that understanding, it's not my right to pick who represents the public. That's the reason we have elections. If we're not going to leave the seat vacant, we should have an election, because there may be a section of town that feels completely neglected, that thinks that they deserve representation, and this person that will serve in this position will, will have the responsibility of attracting votes in whatever section of town that they want to, to campaign, to, to try and lure votes into their corner, and, and, and truly, I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying this against Susan, because I think Susan would make a fine council member. I just don't think it's my call to make who should serve on this council. It's, it's, I mean, the charter says I have the right to, but I, I think when you're dealing with elected officials, elected officials should be elected. That's why they're called that, and they represent the people who elect them.
And we were elected to make hard decisions. That's what we were elected to do. When hard, issues come, we were elected to make these hard decisions, and this is, this happens to be one of them. I, I'm for the appointment, and... to be one of them. I'm for the appointment, and here again, in the past, the Murfreesboro City Council has always appointed.
That's not true.
Okay, what was the issue that we didn't appoint? I'm talking about a vacancy.
We've left it vacant before and...
When was it? I stand to be corrected. When was it vacant? I don't know.
You got, we've got the history somewhere, but I mean, it's...
Well, I mean, Toby was elected for judge, then that's when I ran.
And we've elected. We've elected, we've left vacant, and we've appointed in the past.
We've done, we've done just about everything.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman.
And that's what I'm saying. Each circumstance is probably going to be something different. The circumstances are going to dictate something else. I wish we could say it, we've settled it and it'll always be this way, but it's not going to happen. There's going to be circumstances that happen, tragic circumstances that happen. That's why I say, you know, this is just, has to be considered as a unique circumstance, and what is in the best interest of our citizens and for our city. This is not a political decision. This has more context. It's more context than, than just a political decision. I mean, anybody can read it. You can read it like you want to, but, but, and that's fine if that's the way your, your conscience leads you to say that this is a political decision. But quite honestly, from my heart is, it's not. It's trying to fill a position, give honor to that, to a position, and also it's someone that's conscientious in our community. I've known her a long time. She's an educator, a long time educator in our, in our public, public school system. She's knowledgeable of our community. People know her as well. She can serve, just like you said, Eddie, she can serve competently. And this position gives dignity and honor and remembrance to Doug's, all those people that voted for Doug and put him in this position for one year to allow him to complete that, that year. And then, then the public will make their decision, just like you and Rick have said. They will make their decision in August of 2018. They'll make their decision who they want to continue on a four-year term. And that, again, is my, my preferred process for it to happen. But this circumstance is a little different. I do think we need seven people up here, and I can't see, I can't see us coming to any agreement or conclusion as to who would fill that position any better than Susan at this point.
If we leave it vacant, we're talking about leaving it vacant until August of 2018?
Yeah.
If we have an election, it'll be an eighty-day difference.
People are probably starting campaigns for the next election. I mean, if they were planning on running in August of 2018, they probably should be getting the campaign together today if they hadn't already.
I think that's too long.
It's an eighty-day difference to have an election.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's too long to wait until August of 2018 to leave this seat vacant.
That's fine. Look, I'm gonna say this because Susan will be watching, and I love Susan, you know, so I need to clear the air here on this. She is everything you're saying she is. I'm just telling you, you know, I've always said I thought an election was the right way to go because it's, you know, the seventh vote is exactly that. At the very least, I feel like we should be able to have some sort of opportunity to at least know where she stands on at least some, some issue. One issue for crying out loud, I mean, something other than she's a good person. You know, being a good person does not, does not, is not how I can make the decision. So Susan, I'm sorry. I do love you, but I'm going to have to vote against this in a process standpoint.
In the past, when the council did appoint someone, did they go through a process of how they stood on issues?
All right.
I mean, I don't see us doing it any other...
Again, following up on what Rick just said, you know, all due respect to Susan. And I've said her name twice, I think, and I wish we'd never mentioned her name. I think we should have had a conversation on the process that we wanted to try and go through and voted on that and determined that before we ever got to the point of mentioning anyone's name. And my apologies go out to any name that has been considered or mentioned. But, and it's not that, there's not love for all the people who would like to serve on this council because it's a tremendous amount of responsibility. It's a tremendous amount of time. But I will go back to, everybody up here was elected, and even Bill, who served a partial term, was elected. And that's why we're called elected officials, and that's why we represent people, is we were elected to serve and represent those people. And if we're not doing that, then we're not doing our job.
In the past, the appointed people were not elected. They were appointed. And again, I'm asking, I mean, they were not asked about experience, how they felt on issues. I'm going back to prior appointments.
Who was the last one?
Ron.
Ron was asking Madeline, but, so, what process did Ron go through? I mean, you, you know for a fact that...
No, Ron ran a race.
Did Ron?
He did, but he was appointed. Initially, he was appointed. I think that's...
And so he had an opportunity. Did, he had no opportunity, he had no opportunity to talk to any of the council members prior to so that they knew how he felt on things?
No, see, I wasn't on the council. I cannot, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. I wasn't on the council.
Well, I think you should know before you say, "We just appointed..."
No, I'm saying, in the past, I know, in the past, I know we were appointed and did not go through an interview process.
Let me give you some, let me give you some idea. There was a time, appointments have taken place with the city school board. We all know that. There were, there's appointment. Collier Smith was appointed. At that point in time, there was, the mayor and the council had all talked about, you know, what they, what they were going to do. Well, they made an appointment and, before she ever ran for office, and it was, appointments have happened, straight appointment. No, no. It was just generally the knowledge...
It was a secret ballot.
It was just a secret ballot, and, and it, and it, and it, we did an appointment. Now, and we could, if that, if everybody feels comfortable doing that, we could do that. But...
We can't do a secret ballot.
I think we've been, we can't do that. Okay, okay. Well, anyway, my concern is not to press this beyond us talking. We have talked so much about this. I'm just trying to get us to some resolution, to sit on the table for, until we waited for the legislature to act. The legislature has acted. It's appropriate, in my mind, that we act now, that, that we have, that we make a decision.
I believe the last time we spoke, we would talk process first. If we come to a conclusion on a process, we move forward. If we don't, we don't. But...
Well, I guess I misunderstood then, because my understanding was that we were waiting for this, this, and that's why when I saw it on the agenda, that it was time to go ahead and make the motion.
But the discussion in the last retreat or special meeting was that we would discuss the process.
Okay, we're discussing it now.
All right, well, but it's...
But there's a motion in a second on the floor for a nomination. I mean, that's a long way from discussing the process. I mean...
I mean, this is what we've been doing here, is discussing the process, isn't it?
No.
No.
The discussion has been for the lack of process, I think, for my part, but, you know.
So what, so you want, you want to nominate people and have people, I mean, just for clarity from my point, because I want to understand where you're...
I would at least like to have a conversation with anybody who's interested in this position.
Anybody that's interested, then come, and we're going to have another meeting to vet them in front of us, like public hearing?
I don't, I don't have to have a vetting in front of us, but I, but I would certainly like to speak to each candidate who's, who would like to submit their name and weigh them on the justification of, if I were to have to make an appointment, which I don't want to make an appointment, I'm telling you in front, point blank, I don't want to make an appointment. Let's have an election. I don't care what it costs. Have an election. If that's what, if we feel we can't go for a year without a seat, we just went for a year without a seat.
When do we go for a year without a seat?
On your seat. But...
Hold it, Mr. No, 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 no. I got to clear this up.
Listen, Madeline...
Because he has said this to me more than once. You're sick. You've been sick. We did this. Let me tell you something, Mr. Smotherman. First of all...
Madeline, all due respect, I've sat up here for a long time, and I've not had with any council member, us sitting up here arguing individually with council members. And we're not going to do it today.
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm just going to clear up a point. Number one, Mr. Smotherman, you've said this more than once, and I want to clarify this. First of all, my health is my health. You have nothing to do with my health. That's number one. But number two, I did not leave this council for a year. I left this council on August 27th, 2015, and I returned on May the 12th, 2016. That's nine months. So you're overstepping your boundary when you're talking about my health. Hey, I don't know if this cane makes me sick because you told me before. Everybody knows you're sick. The cane makes me sick.
We're going to talk, we're going to talk about what we're talking about right now. We're not going to talk about...
What about those?
So, Mr. Mayor, we're always going to come back to the same conclusion. Until we have a, until we, if everybody came up with a candidate and we select it and vote it down, what's the next process? So, Rick, if you had a candidate, we brought, brought the candidate in front of everybody, everybody votes, it's three-three.
I don't have a candidate. I mean, I...
I'm just, I'm just...
No, there is none of that at all.
I'm just saying, if, but I'm trying to get to a conclusion. We have to move on.
Yeah, I just am saying that maybe we ought to be able to know. I mean, like, the thing about Joyce Ely on the county commission, I mean, the public pretty much know how she felt about things. She served a whole bunch of years, you know.
She was finance chair. She was chairman of the budget funds.
You know, she's my commissioner. She's appointed. I feel great about it. I already know how she feels about things, right? If, if they would have appointed somebody that nobody had any idea on that commission, other than one or two people, if we'd had a chance to talk to this person, I think it'd be different. That's all I'm, that's, that's where I'm coming from on this. And again, you know, man, I...
So we have a vote on the floor. Can we not finish the process? And if it doesn't work, we go back to the drawing board?
If it doesn't.
Let me apologize to Madeline before we go any further because, Madeline, I apologize if I, if you took offense to the fact that my, my, my comment was intended to say that there have been long extended periods that we didn't have seven council members. There will always be situations where we have six council members on a regular basis because of vacations, because of sickness, because of graduations, and all the other events that life brings us. We will always have six members. Sometimes we've had four members, and the council functioned fine. But the, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just disappointed in the process and the way this has been handled because if, if anyone wants this position, I think they have the responsibility to call the council members and say that they're interested in it and that they would, how they feel about the position, whether they would like to run. All those things should be taken in consideration if I were to be in supporting appointing someone. And if the council had chosen to go and study the process and say, "Let's look at the process," and the ultimate decision for the council was to say, "Okay, we're going to appoint." If that's the case, then, you know, I would like to be able to vote for somebody with confidence that I've looked eye to eye with and said, "Are you campaigning for your next election, or are you just serving out the term?" I think that means a lot to me because there is an incumbent advantage in every election. And if, if, no matter who it is we're picking, I would think that in the process, you would say, you would want that person just to get, to answer that question for you. And, you know, the hearsay of, you know, what a candidate feels or what a appointee might feel, you know, I just personally would like to get it firsthand and have that conversation. And I, I haven't been given that opportunity because I've had a couple people who've told me that they were interested in it, that they wouldn't run if they were appointed. I've had a couple people tell me that they were interested in it and they wanted to run for it. But the person that's been nominated here, I have had no communication with to say that she would like the position, that she's running, she's not running. And, and her qualifications, I think, are phenomenal. But I just can't support it because an elected official, where I'm sitting right now, should be elected. And if, if we can't do that, then...
Kurt, you're, sorry, I should say, Kurt, you're right, and I'll just throw this out here. I mean, if you do go through a process like that, it may take eighty days. You know, if we had more people coming in, we can have an election in eighty days. You know, and so, as far as going through a process of multiple people wanting to kind of come through and enter, or apply and stuff like that, what I'm saying is...
So you're, you're saying a special, like, the sixty-four thousand dollar question?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, eighty-day difference is...
But the sixty thousand dollar number's the number we always throw around because that's based on having an early voting process, a regular election day, and, and, and multiple precincts open that may only have three people voting at them.
That's...
In an election in this type, from, according to Mr. Farley, the election commissioner, that we could probably have a special, special election, for lack of a better term, which might just be a one-day vote or, you know, an early voting that would be available, that would be at multiple precincts where you could vote, Sportscom, Downtown, or, you know, three precincts, and you'd have like early voting, and that would be all you would need. So...
Yeah, I, I think, I understand what you're saying, and that is in the cards for the future. I've had this conversation with Mr. Farley about that being an option for us because of their ability to deal with technology and what they do in early voting. But that's not an option now. It's not something the state legislature would allow. It's not within the cards for us to be able to do that within this year period of time. So the issue, it would be sixty-plus thousand dollars to do the election, and it just didn't seem realistic or rational for us to do that in precincts and have to open precincts where there are, you know, we have county and city residents in the same precinct, and you basically open a precinct, fund that precinct for two or three people to come in all day long. And it just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. But regardless of that, like I say, this appointment to Susan, I would hope, I mean, I don't know any other way to say this. I would hope you would see that there's something else going on here than just filling a seat. There's, there's something, there's something else going on. And it is a responsible act of this, of this body to be able to fill the seat with this gesture. It happens all the time in senate seats. It happens at the federal level and at the state level across this country where someone, a spouse of someone who is deceased is filling that position. Now, often they consider that and go ahead and run again. And if that had been the case in this, quite honestly, that was the, that was the benchmark I put down, is that if you were going to consider running again, I could not support this appointment. But with the affirmation, and I ask her the same, how do I know that she won't do that? You've given, I've given you my word. Now, that's enough.
You had a chance to...
Mr. Williams.
You, you've said already now a couple of times that what made you decide to do this was your opportunity to talk to her.
Yes.
To do exactly what I think we're, we're trying, my, my point exactly.
I got you.
You know, to me...
You want to have that conversation. You want to have that conversation.
I want to think about what is underlying and what is going on here. What's, you know, there's another underlying going, going on here that, you know, you know, by going ahead and bringing this up, you're taking away other people's capability to do that.
Right. That's true.
Not just with her, but with other people. And so this is, this is why it's not maybe like it, you know, I would hope this had gone down, but whatever. You know, I've said my piece on it. It is what it is. You know, I'm, I'm going to have to deal with it. And, you know, unfortunately, it's a bad, you know, it's a, it's going to be a bad and unfortunate situation, but whatever.
I would like to say, Mr. Smotherman, I do accept your apology. When I hit my hand on the desk, it wasn't I was so upset with you. It's, because it's nothing you will ever do on this council to upset me or make me so upset that I'm going to go and say or do anything I shouldn't say I do. But the reason why I hit my hand on the desk, because we have had a conversation on the phone when you have addressed, "Everybody knows you're sick." Well, I'm a walking miracle, and I do accept your apology, Mr. Smotherman. I do accept it.
You know, I've sat here and listened to both sides and, you know, I understand exactly what Bill's saying. I think that the people who, you know, I'd like to think in some, some cases that when you vote for someone's, you're also voting for their family because, you know, you've got to have a family that's supporting to make sure... to have a family that's supporting to make sure you're there for everything, that, you know, we're here eight o'clock on a, been here since four o'clock, and we've been here since one o'clock away from our families. So I can say this with certainty, it will ever be tough for me to vote against Susan, because I sat next to Doug for the years I did. I think the fair thing, Bill, in my opinion, is knowing that Susan's name is out there to give everyone the opportunity to talk to Susan. I think that's a fair opportunity. And, you know, a week from now, if that, if that won't make y'all feel any better to at least get to talk to her, or if we move on, you know, the decision's going to have to be made. But, you know, if we're, if we're talking about process, and that people don't feel like that they've got the opportunity, that they've, they've been able to at least be able to talk, I'm not going to say that's going to change anyone's vote, but, you know, I will.
Okay, Mayor, let me, let me.
Let me finish one thing real quick.
I think I can solve your problem.
I will say this, that when we did appoint Collier, and when we did appoint Nancy Rainier, they were sitting out in the audience.
Right.
So.
I would withdraw my motion with it being considered in a week, and reintroduce it next week, so, if you're willing to do that.
That gives everybody the time to talk to Susan.
I agree.
And, you know, I think everybody just needs to understand, come next Thursday, we may need, there's going to be a motion that's going to be for Susan. You may agree to disagree, but, you know, I do think you get the opportunity to talk. And I just want to say, the point of making the motion was to get us to making a decision as to what we were going to do as far as moving forward. And I think, I feel a little bit more comfortable that we have some track for that now. And, you know, you vote your conscience, and I promise you, I don't hold any grudges about how people feel. I know each of you are conscientious, trying to think through the issues, so I'm not, I'm not trying to press you or back you into a corner to try to make a decision. I just felt like we needed to move forward, so that's all I'm saying. Mr. Williams, if you will.
We're over the bridge now with Susan.
Next Thursday night, if you'll put a specific item on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So it is on the agenda for next Thursday night.
We need to have the discussion.
All right, we'll stand adjourned.